Okay, we're about to start Facebook and everything, or Zoom doing okay? Are we ready? Okay.
Reporting in progress.
Call to order with the town council meeting for Monday, July 10th, 2023. And George, do you want to have the prayer tonight? Did you want to do the prayer?
Well, if you have someone else, I'll be fine.
I can do the prayer.
You can do the prayer, okay.
We give thanks for our freedom and the men and women who protect that freedom. Help us to have civil tongues, open minds, and a spirit of cooperation. Guide us as decisions are made in the best interest of our citizens.
Pledge. Kevin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Sandy, to you for roll call.
William Ellis?
Here.
Trevor Sager?
Here.
Scott Oldham?
Here.
Pamela Samples? Dan Swafford?
Approval of minutes for the regular meeting, June 12th, 2023. All right. Okay, then I'll second.
At the conference, they said as long as you've read the minutes and have an idea of what went on at the meeting, you can still vote on the minutes.
But I've already seconded. I don't, I mean, you can do the next one. I don't really care, but...
Well, if you can have it, I don't care.
Well, we can't pass them if only two of you vote, so...
If we don't what?
If only two vote, then we can't pass the minutes.
Yeah, you can't on the minutes.
You can't?
It's just an ordinance that requires three.
Okay, so, all right. So Trevor made the motion, and William seconded. So can I just do all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, I'm good with that. And things like this, roll call, I don't necessarily know is needed. All right, action to pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll for June 26th and July 10th, 2023.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Award bids for pavement resurfacing, community crossings matching grant, who has that?
I guess I can say it.
All right.
Denise and I looked over the packet from both bidders, and E and B with a low bid of $186,044.38 is in compliant with all the proper paperwork, so that's who we're going to award the grant, or the grant to, or the bidding process to.
Okay. All right, plan commission appointment by me, council president. I hear...
There needs to be a motion to approve the bid.
There does, okay.
Do you want the dollar figure in there, Charlie?
That wouldn't hurt, thank you.
It's $186,044.38, is that right?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid between the town and E and B paving LLC for the total of $186,044.38 for the community crossings matching grant.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now the plan commission appointment. I'm going to be appointing Ryan D. Scaggs to the plan commission, which that would be effective immediately, right, Sandy, or just the next meeting? How does that?
The next meeting.
Next meeting, okay. Resolution 07-2023 to nullify resolutions 02-2020 and 03-2020, the tax abatement for the Richland Senior Housing Incorporated.
We discussed this at a previous meeting, and at one time, the town council had approved a tax abatement for Richland Senior Housing property, and now the council is being asked to approve an amended pilot agreement later down on the agenda, but in any event, the council needs to, or should, pass the resolution nullifying the previous resolutions in order to keep the paperwork square, for lack of a better word, with the auditor's office.
Okay.
Because they're still expecting, they're still expecting to see a tax abatement, and they want to see paperwork with regard to a tax abatement, which basically is no longer in effect, or will be no longer in effect, so. And there are folks here from Richland Senior Housing, if you have any questions. They're appearing by Zoom.
Okay.
I'm not sure how to say this appropriately. I would encourage the council to table this one, at least to the end of the meeting, to see what we do with the pilot project first.
I would agree.
So that way, they're not left without something, because this repeals two other resolutions, and I would hate to see them, should the pilot be sent back for work or unapproved, to be without anything on file.
Or you're just going to move it down even?
Right.
Whatever the pleasure of the council is.
I'd move it down after the pilot agreement. So with that, we'll move on to resolution 08-2023 to approve the purchase agreement for a Freightliner forestry bucket truck and loan agreement with the People State Bank.
Yes, you approved this back in March for us to proceed with the purchase, and this is just to finance the vehicle.
Okay. Any council action on that?
Move, we approve resolution 08-2023 to approve the purchase agreement for the Freightliner forestry bucket truck and the loan agreement with People State Bank.
Will you, Melis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution 09-2023, transfer of funds.
This one is for the street department, or police department, and they changed their vehicle this year to a different model, and the expense to equip that model came in quite a bit higher than we were accustomed to. Everything's coming in higher anymore.
Yep.
So this transfers just help us to get the money into one appropriation to pay out that bill.
Any council discussion on this? Okay. Any public comment? Council action?
Make a motion to approve the resolution 09-2023, transfer of funds for the police department.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, ordinance is on first reading. Ordinance 2023-06, to amend pilot agreement for the Richland Senior Housing Incorporated. This has been, I think, the third time we've, so...
Still listed on first reading, yes.
I was going to ask, how sure are we that this was first reading? Because I seem to recall discussing it at another meeting, but maybe it was just a discussion, not...
It's been tabled every time that I, that I remember.
Okay.
So, last time, you said that you were waiting on a response from the attorney for the last...
Okay, all right. In any event, this ordinance has been discussed at previous meetings, and this is the, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to a pilot agreement, and it's my understand, for Richland Senior Housing, and it's my understanding that Richland is going to closing in August, and either Yvonne Delgadillo or Jason can correct me on that, but in any event, that's the purpose of this particular ordinance.
Oh, thank you, Dennis is here. Thank you so much.
Can I just wait just a second for clarification? Are we considering this on first reading tonight, or on second?
I think it can be second, because if it's been before the council, and it was tabled, I mean, that's a first reading anyway. If you're sure that it was actually on an agenda before, it's first...
It's been a couple of...
Yes.
For first reading?
Yes.
Yeah, I would say let's call it a second reading, then.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Hello. Hello. Can you hear everybody?
This is Yvonne, and I'm going to deal with Allied Real Estate Partners, Allied Affordable Housing. So on behalf of the Richland Board, I just wanted to provide some insight as to why we are here before you, and Jason could chime in, but first of all, I did want to thank you guys again for the support that you've provided this board and these properties. The Richland Senior Citizens Board is very much committed to affordable housing for seniors in the town of Ellisville, and we hope that all of you are happy with the end result of the rehabilitation, as well as the additional 50 units, as the community has been, and just responding to that. So the reason that we're coming before you for the resolution to nullify resolutions 02-2020 and 03-2020 is because, right after the project closed, the state of Indiana passed the pilot program specific for affordable housing, and approved this, and actually, I believe that the eligible town board approved the pilot agreement for Richland Senior Citizens Housing. So that, the pilot agreement has indeed taken precedence over the tax abatement. So what we were asked to do as part of the closing that is taking place on August 1st, is in order for everything to be cleared out in title, is to have a formal nullification of the original abatements, because those never really took effect. It was really the pilot agreement that has taken effect ever since the rehabilitation of the companies, and so the permanent lender is asking for that piece, as well as Monroe So that's in general what, that we are requesting.
And I don't think any change, because technically, you approved it, and it's been recorded for 2022. It came up about that payment, and everybody kind of forgot it, when this came out, the daughter brought it up to our attention, and now you're just kind of doing away with, this has already been filed, but it's just house cleanup.
Right.
So the pilot isn't changing at all? It's the same pilot agreement? Okay.
Correct.
And the pilot agreement would last till when?
I've seen that in this reading here.
Yvonne, this lasts 15 years, doesn't it?
The pilot agreement?
Yes.
My understanding is that is, that is until the, I don't know terms of the timing. Jason, and I don't know if you have that information?
So the pilot, by the, by the, by the extended use agreement, and the extended use agreement is simply a timeline that is a part of the affordable housing program that is administered by the state, and that time period is 30 years. So it coincides with the restricted land use agreement that's recorded against the property, and again, that time period is 30 years.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any council discussion on this?
I have a question, Lou DePiste.
Yes, sir.
Are these addresses encompassed in the apartment complex, the now sits on the old Lindsay case?
Attorney in court.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
They're completely separate.
All right, I just want to be sure.
We have nothing to compare to.
All right. I'll let it go at that.
Set me clear, and I know we've already approved this, but just, is there any payment at all in lieu of taxes coming in to pay for, like ambulance service or anything like that, coming in from there?
$10 fee. We figured how we pay you, but is that right? Yes.
It's $10 annually?
Yeah.
We take checks. All right.
But we've been nonprofit for years, anyway, it's just, we're still nonprofit.
Right. Any more council discussion?
No.
So for any public discussion? All right, any council action?
Just to comment quickly, if I can.
Okay.
I would recommend that, so we don't have conflicting things, Darla, do we need to remove the first resolutions before we enact the pilot?
It probably wouldn't hurt to, I don't know that it matters, but it wouldn't hurt probably to go back to the resolutions and...
Just suggestion.
Make a decision on those before you do the pilot, the ordinance on the pilot.
Then I guess, as a motion, I would move that we pass resolution 07-2023 to nullify resolutions 020-2020 and 03-2020, the tax abatement for Richland Senior Housing Incorporated, and in place, we approve ordinance 2023-06 to amend pilot agreement with Richland Senior Housing Incorporated. That way, if they fail, it's still there.
Did you quote the ordinance number for the pilot?
I did.
Yes.
Okay.
Want me to do it again?
No, I just, that, I'll get that far, that, I'll get the rest.
It's 2023-06.
And Trevor, you seconded? William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, ordinance 2023-07 to amend section 33 of the Ellisville Town Code regarding the town's purchasing procedures. Is that you, Darla?
Yes, at the last town council meeting, the town council asked me to do some amendments to the Ellisville Town Code, which would allow the town manager to purchase services of everybody except attorneys, if the proposed service contract is less than $50,000. And so what you have in front of you are changes that I have proposed to section 33.03 of the Ellisville Town Code, and I think if the town council is inclined to pass this ordinance, I think everything should be up to date then in the code, so that the provisions of the town code that discuss this now mesh together, that they don't contradict one another, then.
Good luck.
Yeah. Any public comment? And before the vote, I would just say, I think that the council, if we do have to hit around that $50,000 approval, let us know the next meeting, or let us know via email or whatever, so, but...
This is first reading.
That's first reading? Okay. Oh, wow, yeah, everything's, so, all right. Ordinance 2023-08 to amend the town's hiring practices.
Again, at the last council, town council meeting, there was a discussion about the supervisors, or specifically the town manager, being able to hire candidates for part-time employment, including part-time firefighters and police officers, at the supervisor's discretion, with the town manager's approval.
Comment on this one?
Previously, the town council had required all hires to be approved by the council, and I think the council had asked for this amendment, so that the supervisors, all supervisors across the board can hire their own part-time personnel without council approval.
Well, my only comment is, I don't believe that PD can hire independently, because we serve as the board of safety, and since there's a sworn component to that, I'm not sure the marshal has the ability to swear them, does he? Authorize their swearing in?
Um...
I have no problem if he does, I just...
I can take another look at that, but I thought that because if they were part-time, he could, but I will look at it before the next meeting.
Any public discussion on this? George and Kevin, are you good with the wording on it? Okay. All right, we already did an ordinance on second reading. Flood report, that would be you, Mike.
Yeah, at this point, I see if we're going to have a pre-bid meeting with Christopher Burke, Andrew Miller will be here. Are you coming?
I can, if you want me to.
Anyway, I know we have a couple people very interested in the job, and we just set up a couple more set of plans today, so hopefully, we'll have a bid to open, more than one bid to open at the next meeting.
Dan in Vision Ellisville. Thought the last meeting was really good, I want to let you know.
The plan commission unanimously approved the comprehensive plan update at their last meeting, and it'll be forwarded to the town council for a vote on the 24th. Just maybe I'm, maybe Denise is going to report on this, I don't want to steal her thunder, so, that's all I'll say about that. Thank you.
Denise, did you want to talk about it now, or wait till supervisor comments?
Supervisor comments.
Okay. All right, so, old business, the Ellisville Plan Commission approved the changes to ordinance 2023-05 requested by the town council to the moratorium on the construction development of certain structures in commercial industrial districts. If I'm not mistaken, Darla, since they approved it, we don't need any action, is that correct?
No action is required. I had asked Sandy to put this matter on the agenda, just to keep the council apprised of the fact that the town, the plan commission did approve the minor changes that the council had wanted to the moratorium on the construction and development of certain structures.
All right, we're going to do another change, and if Scott or Trevor can make sure I get back to it, because I have a tendency to forget, so they can get back to work. I think, Kevin, we have some fire department promotions?
Yes.
Did you want to do that now?
Sure.
All right.
Keep hearing the tones drop, so we figured it's just a matter of time. Yeah, we'll have to go somewhere. Okay, I've got more than three open positions right now for officers, but we're filling three of them, two lieutenants and one captain position, with the positions in the fire department to be promoted to, from one level to another, there's time in the field is required, educational component, which is generally either a 32 or 64-hour course, some of them more than one for the rank, and, yeah, we already covered the time in the field, but, so, what I'm looking for your permission is to bring Travis Abrams up to the lieutenant position, and Tanner Waldrop to the lieutenant position, and Matt Seabot to the captain's position, and Travis is here, and Matt is here, so I've got two of the three here.
Darla, do we need to do these separately, or do we do them all together?
I think you could do them all together, as long as Sandy swears they do separately.
Oh, you don't need to swear them.
Not at all.
Yeah, never mind, okay.
We swear at them down there.
You are sworn at?
Yeah.
All right. Any...
I'm just not going.
All right.
Okay.
Any council discussion? All right. So any council action?
I'll make a motion to approve the following fire department promotions, Travis Abrams, lieutenant, Tanner Waldrop, lieutenant, and Matt Seabot, captain.
Second. Oh, second, sorry.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and thank all of you guys. You've earned it.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
All right, going back to old business, engineering consulting services agreement between the town of Ellisville and COPP CSLT LLC.
At the last town council meeting, the council had given, if I'm not mistaken, Mike Farmer, the authority to work out within certain limits, a contract with Rick Kopic for consulting services, for engineering services for the town. Rick Kopic has since become an LLC, and in any event, because the council had not approved the ordinance allowing the town manager to hire certain services with a contract of under $50,000, I thought it would be best for the council to have this back on the agenda for a quick review and approval. So it's the same as the contract you saw earlier, the difference is, we've swapped out Rick Kopic's name for the name of his company, and the services are going to be 750 a month as a retainer, and $100 for each additional hour of services.
Any council discussion on this?
Did we get the insurance figured out on this?
Yes.
What are we talking about, the insurance?
Yes.
That's all, take care of that.
Yes.
What was the resolution on that?
Mike probably knows better than I do.
I believe he obtained...
A policy, and then...
An insurance policy from the same provider that the town gets, and it's included in the price.
Gotcha. Any other council discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, council action?
Move, we approve the engineering consulting services agreement between the town of Ellisville and COPP CSLT LLC.
Will you, Melis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Motion carries.
New business notice to accept bids on the Vine Street Stormwater Project. I'm sure that's Mike also.
Well, the project's out for bid, you can contact the clerk's office, or Darla's office for information regarding bidding on the project, and we'll give them a set of plans via email.
The notice of bids has been placed in the newspaper twice.
All right.
And it did show up in the newspaper twice.
That's even more important. So there's no council actions needed on this, correct?
No, not this evening.
All right. Thank you. Any council discussion or public comment? Okay, privilege of the floor, anything not covered by the agenda? Dan?
Donovan Neese from the Neese Insurance Agency and myself are once again sponsoring Business After Hours this Friday, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the park, at the shelter house, and I'd like to invite all of you to come to that if you can, it's a good time. We have marinated turkey from Odin Locker Plant, and beans, and the fixings, and give away a lot of prizes, and it's always a good time. We've done it for several years. Kenny Williams used to do it with me before he retired, and if you've been there, why, you know it's a good time, so, and want to invite all of you to participate in that if you can. Okay, 5:30 to 7:30. Thank you.
I'll be there.
But now Mike said he'll be there.
He should turn.
I just want to thank everybody that showed up for the fireworks event. I believe it was a huge success, one of the best shows that I've seen all the time we've been doing it. The planning that goes into it is pretty intense. If anybody has any recommendations to make it better, I'm all ears, and we plan on pushing forward and doing it again next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank everybody involved with that.
On that topic, I was going to say, in our council comments, but I want to thank both police, fire, street department, everybody else involved, because I think this year, you probably set a record, the number of people who were there, and nothing but a stream of phenomenal comments from folks. I know you guys were a little worried about the traffic pattern, but that worked wonderful. Everybody got out fairly quickly for the amount of people you had, and more than anything, no one got hurt.
Right.
So, good job, guys.
I just wanted to comment on that that was a fantastic fireworks show. I go to several of them. Ellisville puts on the best fireworks show there is, and I watched it from the Methodist Cemetery, and that's the first time I'd parked in a cemetery for a long time. But I wasn't trespassing, because I have three plots up there, so I was on my own property, but it was great.
You're just scoping out your property? There you go.
But everybody that I've talked to thought it was fantastic. But, uh, everybody that I've talked to thought it was fantastic. Thank you.
Unfortunately, I can see it from my backyard, so I like that.
I want, I want to say one other thing. A few weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago, uh, the Lions, Ellisville Lions Club picked up trash, um, out on the highway and through town up to the, up to here and then back down around. And, um, I was really impressed that I didn't even have a five-gallon bucket full of trash for all that time. Somebody, I guess you folks, the, um, street department takes care of picking up trash and mowing and everything, and there was hardly any trash to pick up. And that's, that's, uh, a really big statement on how well this town's taken care of because, uh, hell, I pick up more trash in front of my farm than I picked up through town. So they're doing a super good job.
Yeah, but that's something you guys do.
Well, we do, do pick up, when we do see something, but there's a lady that belongs to the Lions Club. That I've seen her on several occasions, with a little red wagon that walks up and down the highway and picks that up. And that's, uh, forgive me. Yeah, Holly, Ned, early. She does that quite often, so that's probably one of the reasons as well is because of Holly. So, thank you though.
The only thing I didn't pick up was the dead possum.
I'm having that for dinner tonight, so we're good. All right. Now, I mean, that's one of the things about Ellisville that's great. We have these little community, this community here and these groups that nobody's telling them to have to, no one's beating off with the head and saying they have to, they're doing it because they love where they live. And that pride, I just, it's just humbling, it really is. Any more public comments, I think? Going to supervisor comments. Mike?
Well, we were talking about, uh, Grand Fireworks.
I'll just leave it, our kids and grandkids had a lot of fun and it was, uh, comfortable and easy out and I felt protected there. There's police on foot, on bikes, on golf carts, cars. I, I felt well protected, I thought it was pretty cool. And it felt like 4th of July, so it's pretty good, that's pretty good, uh, pretty good. So, uh, the other thing I want to talk about is, um, God, I lost track, but I think last Thursday, uh, the storm started, uh, before the 4th and, uh, our crews, um, Department of Public Works, fire was out, I'm sure police got called out too, but it was just one storm after another. And, uh, some of our crews worked most of the weekend and I know I got called out several times myself, so we worked on the 4th of July, in fact. So, uh, it's good to have crews that'll come out and take care of business for you, so I really appreciate that. And then something I didn't get to do that I annually do about this time of year is mention the vegetable stand out in front of the Jiffy Tree. It is officially summer here, the vegetable stand is as good as ever, and, um, I think that puts us on the map if nothing else does.
I just want to comment that every year Pat tells me he's not gonna do it, and every year Pat does. And for about the last 10 years and, yes.
Pat and Walder, a shout out to them.
George? Kevin?
Uh, just wanted to make sure everybody knows the fireworks are all put on by donations, all the funds, so what we collect at the gate, businesses donate throughout the year, so whatever we get, the house, the hat is still out, so we'll be preparing for next year.
All right.
We got a visitor on Zoom.
Oh. Oh, Jimmy, is that Jimmy?
Yes, it is.
Jimmy, how you feel?
I, I've been, I've been listening in, I just want to tap in on the supervisor's comments. My understanding is the cooperation between the fire department and the police department is fantastic. Uh, Craig Davis and George put together a great plan and I think they put it off pretty well, but I appreciate your thoughts and prayers. I'm, uh, mending slowly, but I should be back before too much longer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Thank you, Chris, I appreciate that.
I just want to add kudos to what Mike said about the crews last, well, two weeks ago, Thursday, when the storm rolled in, it was time for the guys to go home. And we seen the storm come and roll in and all, all the guys at the, at Street Division part of the DPW, they stuck around till after it hit, and then they stuck around for another couple hours. And we, we assisted Monroe County Highway and some of the cross jurisdiction areas that we have with the county, because that's a pretty good working relationship, we're starting with them. And I'm really proud of the guys, everybody with the utilities and the street both, they've done a really good job the last few weeks with what we've been dealt with from the weather, so that's all I got.
Awesome. Denise?
Good evening, I wanted to let you know that at the plan commission's meeting on, um, July 6th, they voted unanimously to give the town council a favorable recommendation on the comprehensive plan, and I left a draft copy for you today. So give you a couple weeks to review it, it'll come before you on July 24th for your consideration.
Thank you, Sandy.
I don't have anything.
All right.
Except I did like fireworks.
Okay. All right, uh, council comments? Anything to add? All right. Seeing none, no other business at this time? Call the meeting adjourned.